Has been given and is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10 colon 4 dash 6, et sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, please call the roll.
Sorry about that. Okay. Berkowitz.
Here.
Joskowitz.
Here.
Kaplan.
Here.
Mazzarella.
Here.
Harri.
Here.
Ready?
Pardon?
Williams, Iraquin.
Present.
We also have with us our board planner, Mr. Chadwick, our board engineer, Mr. Holloway, and our board attorney, Mr. King.
Let's start off with the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
At this point in this evening's meeting, I see an empty room for the most part. Is there any member of the public that has anything to be brought to this board that is not on this evening's agenda? I hear none and see none. We are going to go right into the agenda. Application 2225, Parth Kinsagra, 372 Halsey Road, seeking a sevarance to legalize an existing driveway. Good evening.
Sir, could you raise your right hand? You swear from testimony before the board of the truth so help you God. And for the record, you are Parth Kinsagra, A-N-S-A-G-R-A, and you're the owner of the subject property. Thank you, sir. Have a seat. You can speak.
Make sure you use the microphone when you talk. And so tell us a little bit about your driveway and why are you here tonight?
So basically, we had an old driveway. When we bought the house, it was...
You speak into the mic, please.
So the driveway was old. When we bought the house, it was exactly, the opening entranceway was exactly same as before. And then in 2019, we applied for the new house permit and we built a new house. But the driveway entrance and the front first driveway part is still, I guess, less than five feet, which is the original one. So we want to keep it that way.
You're saying this driveway was there?
Not...
For the old house?
Not the entire driveway, just the company side entrance and that section, yes.
What, you have a two-car garage now?
Yes. So driveway is...
It lines up with a two-car garage?
Uh, yes.
Is there any landscaping between your driveway and your joint house?
Adjacent is a company, not the house. So it's like company wooded lot, which is not maintained, so there's...
What's next to you? Is there not a house down there?
No, no, there's no house next to us.
What is, what is...
It's like, you know, it's a big company that they, it's a big company building, basically.
Oh, it's away from you. You're, you're up next to a, a business.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't rest me.
It's a company building.
Whose fence is that? There's yours.
It's there. It was there previously, so we didn't touch it.
All right. So you're not encroaching on any residential property like this?
No, no, no.
Okay.
We only have one neighbor, which is like the backside.
Okay.
Two sides are road and one side is like a wooded side.
Right. And you're trying to keep, have, keep from having to park on the street, is that...
Yeah.
The driveway gives you enough. And you, you live in, you live in this house?
Yes, yes.
Any other questions by the board?
Nope.
Nope.
No?
No.
No?
No.
Are they with you?
No, no.
No, not, okay. I'm going to say, are any members of the public who wish to speak? I'm sorry. Is there any member of the public that has any questions of this witness on the testimony given this evening? Now I hear some. Okay. Are any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to the application? They supported the application again? I see nobody. You, you've said your case. You don't, you're not wanting anything else, right? Okay. Do we need, we don't need a conference? Someone like to make a recommendation on why we should approve this?
Yeah, it's the minimus in nature. It's proving something that's there already. No residential neighbors, so I'll be voting it for.
Thank you. Someone frame a resolution? Chadwick, you did such a good job on the...
Sure. Thank you. Application 22 colon 25, Parth Kinsagra, 372 Halsey Road, Lot 311, Lot 1, Zone R4, recommend granting a sevarance to legalize an existing driveway contrary section 430 dash 284 X.
Second, ready.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Joskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Mazzarella.
Yes.
Harri.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Iraquin.
Yes. The result of the variance is granted. We'll memorialize this next week, maybe? Next week, and then you'll be free to get your paperwork. You're not, obviously don't have to do anything, so you're...
No, it's just a financial, it depends on how much you guys pay. So happy to hear you guys approved it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Enjoy.
Thank you.
Nora, is the other case, is...
No, we...
Mary Ellen Simpson?
Yeah, originally, there were three people. One didn't notice, and this person didn't notice one person.
Do I have a motion to adjourn the special seven o'clock meeting?
Second, Joskowitz.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Although these pictures go with Simpson.
They go with, no, the first main hotel.
Next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. You know, I have to tell everyone, I watched the tape on the two-family house.
Since last time, this time, I submitted a new survey, updated one with the photograph.
So, Mr. Chairman, this is the third time it's been here. The first time, there was a hand drawing on an old survey. There was a comment by the municipal engineer advising that he went out there, he made observations that there was additional pavement or impervious coverage that wasn't shown on that hand-drawn survey. It was adjourned so they could provide a updated survey with the proper, you know, what was on the property. They came back, the second time, that was not done. The board requested pictures and the survey, and there's some suggestion by board members that maybe some of the impervious coverage in the back would be, you know, removed. And what we have received is a copy of the pictures that our board secretary, Nora, has provided to us at the applicant's end. It's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, about 12 pages, as well as an updated survey.
Okay. Where's, where's the survey? Do we, do we know why you're here? Did the town issue a roaming violation to you? Is that why you filed? Everything's there now, right? But how, why did you apply for a variance?
I wanted to legalize it. I wanted to legalize it.
You knew it was an error?
What was it again?
Didn't your, didn't a neighbor call?
Yeah, he, yeah.
This was a code enforcement case.
So there was some kind of communication between the township and the applicant?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did the... Any office had a, had a notice?
Did you get a summons?
No.
Code, the code enforcement officer, Mr. Regear.
No, no one.
No one.
Nothing.
But you did hear from the township, and that's why you applied?
Yes.
Okay. And it looks to me, the only variance is lot coverage by 2%.
And like my neighbor, he also has a complaint, like stormwater is running from my property to his basement. That was his other complaint, too. That's the reason I'm there.
Is our engineer saying something about that?
Yes.
Whose white fence is that? Is that yours?
That's mine. Yes. I already have a permit on that also.
It's Justin's. His office says, based on the view of the... What's the township's letter say?
Kyle Howard.
It says, inside inspection revealed the entire rear of the property is already currently completely covered in pavers, beyond which what is proposed on the survey. Since this is not shown on the survey, it will further increase the existing impervious coverage over what was calculated for the application. The applicant is proposing to go over the max amount allowed for impervious coverage and is proposing to keep the location of the shed within the setbacks for both rear and side yard. The increase in impervious coverage results in an increase in stormwater runoff from the property. This is particularly concerning as the impervious coverage goes right up to the property line. If this problem, if this produces a problem for any of the adjacent neighboring properties, the applicant will then be required to rectify the problem by addressing the increase in stormwater runoff. The patio has already been constructed, therefore it would, it is assumed little or no soil moving required. Soil movement, blah, blah, blah. It's just soil movement. We're about that. So Mr. Lizza is saying that if you're, since you're right up to the edge and you, and there's, neighbors are having problems. Neighbors are having problems, you're telling them. The neighbors are getting water in their basement.
But, I mean, if he's getting water into his basement, he should have approved, like, where is it coming from? I mean, as you can see on my survey, there is a roof drain that is drawn, and it has been taken out on the street. That's a new roof drain.
Does that take surface water or just the leader water?
No, that's just the roof drain from the house, like, you know...
So what the, the roof water was there? What's...
Roof drain was there. Roof drain was there, but it wasn't deep down. That's why, when the pavers were there, it was uneven, and the water was getting together.
But you didn't do anything for drainage for the pavement?
No, nothing, nothing.
So that's the issue?
I just, I just had to, like, you know, like, put up a new drainage and then like, take it out on the street.
Have you talked to your neighbor about the drainage problem?
He's the one, when I was having problem like that, he's the one who came in and he suggested, so this is what I did. He came into my property and then he suggested.
Is he here tonight?
He's not here.
So, so John, just, just so you know, there's a, there's relief from side yard, shed, rear yard, shed, patio, side yard, rear yard patio, and impervious coverage. So it's to legalize an 80 square, 80 square foot shed, 84 square foot patio, and install a 269 square foot patio expansion, but that was already done, so that would be to legalize that as well.
The impervious coverage is only 2.58 over the, and that's about 120 square feet.
But is that the real number?
Probably causing a problem. I think that's the real number, because this is...
Okay.
And as you look at it now, it looks... When were those pavers put in?
Around last year.
Same?
Last year.
Last year. So you, you put them in?
Yes.
Without a permit?
We don't know, we have been...
I mean, we didn't know that if we have, we have a permit on that.
But you put them in without getting a permit?
Yes.
Did you put them in or have a contractor doing it?
I mean, I have a person who comes in and he does the work, like, handing them.
There looks in one of these pictures to be a grate where the leader makes its bend. So you said they, the water in the, off the patio wouldn't get into that system, but it does look like it would. Is that a grate there or is that just something that was laying in the grass?
Which one?
I don't know which picture it is.
It's, it's in front of the shed, with the grass on the side.
That is the drainage. That's the new drainage that my person, we put it in, and then we took it out right down on the street. That's the new drainage.
So you're saying he dug that up?
Well, it is called the yard drain now, so...
So have you had any dealings with your neighbor since this has been done?
No, not...
So we don't know where he stands since you made this correction, correct?
Yes.
It's also not here tonight, Scott.
Right, that's why I'm...
I have, I absolutely no idea, like, what his problem is. I mean, I bought the house from him back in 2015.
Oh, you bought the house from him?
From him.
Interesting.
And then, and then, like, he took a permission, like, after two years, to build a house right, right next to it. That was the space there. There was a lot there.
Oh, so he sold you his house?
Yes.
And then built a new house?
Yes.
On a lot next to your house?
Yes.
Interesting.
Now he's complaining. Now he's complaining. Pretty much now. Let's blame the house in the middle.
What are these white sparks? Are they drains?
Which one?
On the first page?
Oh, no, that's not a drain. No, that's not a drain. That's just a cover from top of the fence that has fallen down.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So that's not, uh, something they put it like...
Was the yard drain put in, the new drain, was that put in next to his house or...
No, that was...
It's on the, it's not, it has nothing to do, it's not draining from his side of that fence? So, and that back patio is the, next to his house is the one you're looking to get approved? That was the one that was put in last year? This one here? The different color block, that's the one you put in last year?
Yes.
That butts up against his property?
Did you?
I mean, yeah.
Is there an icing problem? I see that the drain pipe goes through to the curb. There's a, is there an icing problem before it gets to the inlet across the driveway? In the winter time? Is there...
It goes right to the street.
Right, but the, from the street, it has to go down to the inlet. So I was wondering if there's any flow during this wintertime that would cause any icing problems?
So you, this drain is new?
Yeah.
You just put that in?
Yes.
And when was the last time you had, had a, either confrontation or a conversation with your, your neighbor who complained?
I never had after that.
He's never?
Never.
Never?
He, I mean, he comes up to his house. I mean, he, he lives there. Like, once in a while, he comes in, like, in the weekends. After that, I mean, I never talked to him.
He's never complained?
I mean, his wife, his kids, everyone stays there. They never complained a lot, anything.
Where does the drain go?
What was it again?
Where does that drain go?
Down on the street. Down on the street.
Yeah, look at the, look at the survey. It shows a curve line.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the photo, because the drain looks like it's above grade. And I look to the right, there's a puddle. I'm just wondering if the drain does anything?
Yes, it doesn't look like it collects the water. And that wouldn't be on, it's not on the neighbor's side of the yard anyway, so it's not...
Picture, last two numbers are 45.
So the impervious coverage is not that dramatic. The other question is, you had all these pavers sealed, so no water can seep through it, correct? They're all cemented in or all...
No, they're all...
Is there any grouting material between the blocks?
Nothing.
That when it rains, do you notice any of the rain penetrating through the...
It doesn't, it's not penetrating.
In the picture, it's not. It's wet, sitting here.
That's, I mean, that's when it would be poor, right?
Yeah, it looks wet.
And it does look like there's something in between the pavers?
Yes.
Do you understand the question on the grouting, so that when the person installed the paver?
Yes.
If they put material in there that would not allow water to flow through it to the ground? That looks like is what, what has happened?
No, I think he didn't put it.
So if you didn't put it, then water should be able to go between these pavers to the ground? Is that your testimony?
Yeah. No, it's nothing. He didn't put anything like that.
But if, something is in there, because everything is even, it's the same color...
Maybe sand?
There's no grass growing up to any of it.
I think sand.
Oh.
I think sand.
If you don't know, don't answer.
It's just wet.
It looks to me that I think one of the board members is correct. The inlet needs to be lowered. The drain off to the side of the patio there. Looks like that needs to be lowered.
Okay.
Don't fill in dirt around it. You got to drop it down so everything will go in there.
Okay.
Agreed?
Agreed.
And I, I think if the board approves this, you ought to make it subject to... Chaz, you look at it or she?
I'm looking at the elevations right now, and the grate, the four-inch grate, the bottom is 99.48, and the road bottom is 99.62, so it's, the road is a little bit higher than the bottom of that. If I can go by the numbers here.
I, I would also, listen, I'm no engineer, but it kind of looks like those pavers are sloped towards the house away from the grate. Just looking at where the water's sitting. The water has moved away from the grate, towards your house, which you wouldn't want anyway.
If this came in for the new application, I would ask if it's a corner of property, and especially if they have two inlets in front, it's frontage, they would pick one of the inlets or to tie into, not just run it to the curb. Yeah, we don't have the elevations on contours on the drawing, so we really can't tell what's available.
I mean, this is, this is, you know, a huge operation here, so we just got to get things...
Yeah.
Straightened out. I mean, I, Chaz, what I said was, do you want to look at it? Do you think...
Have the, submit something with contours on it or elevations, so I can see if the drainage works, because right now, what's existing, this is, drain doesn't even go to, doesn't, isn't level enough for the street. Doesn't, based on the elevations given here.
So are you saying if we, if we were to approve this, it's with the contingency of having somebody inspected and make sure that the elevations and the system is working correctly?
I'd, I'd like to carry it and see what the township engineer wants to do with this, instead of having to be responsible for. I can review it, but if not being a site plan application, it's a little bit dubious right now.
So, Chaz, do you want them to submit elevation, an elevation drawing?
If they were to submit just a drawing of where the pipes are going to go with the elevations, that could be sufficient, if they have extra elevation.
So let me ask you this question. If, if they were to lower that drain, it still wouldn't get out to the street then, because it'd still be lower than the street?
Right, exactly right.
Okay.
Street is higher than the backyard?
Yes. Yes. Based on the, where it's showing out, coming out now with the curb, the bottom of the curb is 99.62, and it's 99.56 at the, at the pipe.
So could it be, could there be a reverse pitch that the water's actually coming back into and coming up?
Yes.
That wouldn't help.
So, yeah, the person that put the drain in for you was not obviously a licensed...
Yeah.
And so his knowledge of the pitch of the land and everything else, not too great, so he put, put the drain in, dug the ditch, put it down to the curb, and that, everybody's going to be happy. What we're saying to you right now, that ain't working.
Is your backyard is lower than the road?
Backyard? I mean, I can't really tell.
So what's his next step? He has to have it, talk to the town engineer?
Yeah, we can talk to the town engineers, all three of us, because it might be something where we just pick it up and run a pipe up to the other inlet, the invert's work. So there are options, but we have to look at the contours.
Okay.
And say, if we could even put a pump or something in that current drain over to the other outlet?
We really don't want to utilize a pump if we can find one.
Go do it in winter time, then. Okay, well, no.
It's only because of the expense and the upkeep in the operations, so we really try to, I guess, center, so we're also...
Okay, so they're going to carry this until they come back with more information?
Again, that's the recommendation of the board's engineer, to carry this until he meets with the town engineer and yourselves, and tries to resolve the slope issue and the, and the ability to get that drain to drain the water from the property out to the road. That would resolve the problem, hopefully.
Got a date, Nora?
You didn't get it approved? You, you need to get a meeting with our engineer?
Okay.
And the town engineer to come up with a solution, because what you did to fix it, valiant as it might have been, isn't working.
Okay.
So you need to get with the, both engineers, come up with a solution, and then we could vote on whether the solution is really going to fix the problem.
Okay.
Fair?
Fair.
Okay.
Motion to carry this case to?
September 14th.
September 14th.
So I have to set up a meeting?
Call.
Okay.
The town engineer?
Okay.
He'll get, meeting with Chaz, his office?
Okay.
And you take it from there.
Okay, okay.
But it's not, you, it's your responsibility. You got to get it going.
Okay, okay.
And I'm going to also suggest that you address this issue of the impervious coverage of the materials between the pavers, what that is, if water can go through there or not. If you can, you should check with your neighbor and see if his problems don't exist anymore. Because we don't, we don't want him to have a ongoing problem. I heard the testimony, they didn't have a problem. He just filed it because he didn't like the coverage. Or did he claim he had water?
He claimed he had water.
Somebody was getting water, basically. Okay, I'm sorry. So do I, do we have a motion? I don't know if I heard.
Yeah, so move.
So move. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Will they need to give us extensions?
Yes.
All right. Make sure you see Nora, because you're going to need to get an extension, you're going to need to grant us an extension of time.
And, and you will grant us an extension of time, correct? Thank you.
We'll get it straightened out eventually. Number 14. Okay, application 22 colon 35, New York Renaissance. Major soil moving permit. What is this? Oh, jeez. Is this the temple?
What, what property is this?
Okay.
Okay. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Steven Tombelock from Weena Law Group on behalf of the applicant, New York Renaissance Group. If the board thinks back about a year and a half ago, there was an application before you involving a sort of now abandoned house at twelve, twelve-one on Littleton, which the applicant wants to tear down and put up with a multifamily house. It's next to the gas station.
Oh, yeah, 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 the little single-family house with the, with the dip in the back and the neighbors from behind. Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So this is actually,
I know exactly.
This is actually a real interesting application from my perspective, because it's never happened before. And let me take a few minutes to explain wh- why we're back. So when the applicant first came before the zoning board, it saw use variance, site plan, and major soil moving permit approval. During the hearings, based on the way the site was configured, our engineer read the Parsippany Soil Moving Ordinance and declared before this board, we don't need a major soil moving permit. The, the soil's staying on site. That was a mistake. The way Mr. Lizza interprets the ordinance is that if you move a cubic yard of soil, that's soil moving, whether it goes on or off the property. It's soil moving.
Okay.
So what that means is that we need a major soil moving permit, but our engineer before this board a year and a half ago said we didn't need one. So now, we had to file a new application for major soil moving permit.
Okay.
Based on everything that was done before, it's just because we said we didn't need one and we really did need one. So we filed. Mr. Lizza, uh, wrote a memo dated May sixteen saying he's fine with it. However, the way it works, we had, we need a land use board approval, or at least a recommendation to approve before he can proceed with issuing the permit. So it was a, it, it was very entertaining watching the, the back and forth between Mr. Lizza and our engineer, where our engineer was trying to explain to Mr. Lizza how the ordinance worked, and Mr. Lizza said, no, that's not how it works. This is how it works, and that we're back. So nothing's changed. It's just a matter of that, had our engineer kept his mouth shut, this board would have approved the major soil moving permit a year and a half ago. But now we're here, and, uh, it's a mistake, and I, I wish it hadn't happened, but it was a genuine disagreement on the interpretation of the soil moving ordinance. So the, the reality is that six hundred eighty-three cubic yards of soil are gonna move. Very little of it's gonna leave the site, because it's just moving within the site, but that's enough to trigger the four hundred, that's above the four hundred cubic yard threshold, which triggers ma- major soil. Uh, under Mr. Lizza's review memo, this doesn't have to go to council for approval. He'll approve it. But again, it's, uh, the prerequisite is getting a land use board to recommend approval.
How much will be moved off the, the site?
If I remember the testimony, it was less than a hundred cubic yards.
I just want to put that in there.
Yeah, so.
Questions by the board?
No.
Any members of the public have any questions of this attorney? I won't call him a witness. I hear none, see none. Someone like to make a recommendation?
Sure, because as the attorney just said, it was an honest mistake on an interpretation, and the soil really isn't getting moved off of site. Anyway, I'm gonna vote to approve or recommend.
Someone frame a resolution so we can move on?
Application twenty-two colon thirty-five, New York Renaissance Group, twelve-one-nine Littleton Road, block one ninety-nine, lot forty-eight point one, in the R three zone. I recommend that the board grants the major soil moving permit for the previously approved application nineteen colon sixty-three for preliminary and final major site plan.
Is there a second?
Second ready.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Burfitt.
Yes.
Josko.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Mozzarella.
Yes.
Creek.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Willand.
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Yes. Really appreciate it, everybody. Thank you so much. Have a great summer.
Good night.
Good night, Matt. Somehow. New York Renaissance, New Road. Yeah, I got New York Renaissance. I got, which one is this? New York Renaissance? Well, Farrah. I used to watch my agenda, but that's okay. Uh, two seventy-three New Road. Case number something.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one seventy-four. Is that the last case we have tonight?
Yep.
It'll go quickly.
My wife's not calling us, she's not.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Joseph O'Neil of Garofalo O'Neill Richeyrio here on behalf of two seventy-three New Road LLC. This is in connection with a use variance application to approve three uses on the same site. It's important to note that there is gonna be no changes to the site itself, the existing parking lot and building. Everything will remain unchanged. These uses are currently existing on the site. This was, uh, brought to the attention of the board and the township through a sweep of towing yards that the township commenced about a year ago. So with me this evening, I have a couple of witnesses. I'd like to get right to it. Mr. Chairman, with your approval, call Mr. Napoli.
All right, ahead. Before you call the witnesses, you want to grant existing conditions. Nothing in the application really says that the use of does.
Well, we'll provide that testimony right, right now. To Mr. Napoli.
Sir? Raise your right hand. You swear firm, testimony about to give before the board is true, so help you God. And for the record, could you state and spell your name?
Charles Napoli, N E T O L L A.
And you're the, um, owner?
I'm the owner of the property.
And is it factual testimony about the property?
It's just factual testimony.
You're, you're sworn, you have a seat, you're just talking to the microphone.
You're right, Napoli, you're a member of the LLC that controls the property, isn't that true?
Yes.
You're also a principal of C and L Towing, which operates off that site?
Yes.
You have a license with the township of Parsippany Troy Hills to provide towing services in and around the township?
Yes.
And in connection with that, you maintain a, uh, I'm just gonna call a yard for storage of, uh, towed vehicles on this site?
Yes.
It's about ten vehicles, uh, on the north end of the building of the property, isn't that true?
Yes.
So this is, uh, an application to approve additional uses on the site besides C and L Towing. Could you tell us what, or the site was used for originally?
Um, the site was built in nineteen eighty-four for, uh, I believe at the time it was called Sikimac Bulk Transport, which was a tanker company that had about forty-five tractor trailers. So it was a site where tractor trailers, obso and that of it. It was also the main building, which was used for a tank cleanout, where they washed their tanks out, because they used it for, uh, bulk transport. It was a repair facility for his trucks and then the offices. Uh, in two thousand seven, I want to say, somewhere right around there, um, that company was sold off. The property became available, and my company moved in in two thousand seven, which was C and L Towing Service. And we were primarily a towing service with a, um, division that, we have a lot of lowboys and tractor trailers move heavy equipment. So we utilized that site up until twenty twenty-one.
And since you've got another facility, uh, where you're storing most of your trucks, doing most of your operations, this is just a satellite facility, isn't that true?
Correct. We, we are a multiple site. We, we have eleven sites altogether throughout North Jersey. Um, so Parsippany, we moved in in two thousand seven. It fit our needs for many, many years. Um, when we, we built a very large facility in East Hanover, we decided that Tommy Company could move back there. It was under one roof. Uh, we had ten another property of ours, which would be trench plate now. Um, so we kind of just did like some exchanging of like, you know, tenants. We moved back to East Hanover and kept part of the property to maintain our, uh, ability to tow for certain municipalities, which are governed by, uh, proximity to those municipalities, so we.
These are ordinance requirements.
Yes, yes.
So you have to maintain an office, you have to maintain a yard.
Correct.
And that's what the site is doing, even though your main operations, your main offices?
Are in East Hanover, yeah. East Hanover dispatches for all our facilities, those, you know, the central office for all our facilities, so. But we've moved, like I said, since then, we moved low and low void division, we moved everything out of Parsippany, but just maintained just a small part of it for our operations, you know, which is very miniscule for that site.
Now, uh, you've, uh, since your operations are no longer focused on this site, you mentioned you brought in some additional tenants. Who are these tenants?
Um, the tenant that we rent to, the main tenant, uh, is, uh, it's called Trench Safety. They're a national company. They, uh, rent, um, for, it's easy to explain, steel plates for when you, you know, you have road construction. They rent steel plates and then trench boxes for when, you know, construction companies, street, or municipalities take trenches for piping in. They're supposed to shore up the side so it doesn't cave in on anyone. So that is their main business. It's steel plates and trench boxes. That's basically.
Uh, you're making no changes to the site by leasing out?
None whatsoever.
And you're still maintaining there, I believe there's twenty-seven parking spaces on site?
Yes, there is.
So there's ample parking, uh, for your operations?
Yes.
Uh, there's a second tenant that's related to the trench company. It's a tow truck company, MMG Towing?
Uh, they're not a towing company. They're, they're.
Truck company?
Yes. It, that would be trench plates, um, basically they're in-house trucker, but, um, he operates his own business, but he's, they're a dedicated trucking company. He operates four tractor trailers, which are parked on site.
And they, they transport those steel plates?
Correct.
To and from job sites?
Yes.
And that's on the west, their, their trucks are stored on the west end of the building?
Uh, yes, correct.
Between the two buildings?
Yes.
And there's an actual, there's a cross-easement in between those buildings, a lot, because it's a one uniform paved parking lot, isn't it?
Yes.
And that's all illustrated on a exhibit that we provided to the board as part of this application, along with a representation of the materials stored outside. I'll get back to that, materials stored outside in a minute. But, uh, you don't have anything outside, do you?
Um, no, um, basically, you know, we operated a twenty-four hour business for, um, fifteen years out of that location. With heavy lowboys, uh, we were in and out of that location twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Um, the operations now are, I would say, less than five percent of what we were doing there for the last fifteen years. Um, Trench Safety probably does about four or five loads in and out a day. Um, it's not a high volume, so the truck traffic is minimal. Um, the employee count there is now probably a quarter of what it was when we were there. So, you know, the impact on that site is actually tremendously less than what, what C and L Towing was there.
So you're still operating your towing, your, some business out of there?
Correct.
Okay.
We, we maintain part of the yard and an office space, you know, it's a satellite location.
Okay, and then you have the people that rent the, um, boxes and the plates?
Correct.
And the trucking company that does the trucking for
For them, yes.
The boxes and the plates?
Yes.
It seems like those three businesses would marry together very similar, uh, if you had one company that was doing all three of them. And, because you, you know, whether you're moving plates or you're moving lowboys or, you know, my little, limited experience in the trucking business, it's sure, it sure seems like, um, there's no issue here. I don't know. How did you get here?
Why are you here?
Yeah, why, why did you? Not, not what road did you take? Did you come in a lowboy?
Um, so, uh, like I said, we moved in two thousand seven. Um, we had a CO for C and L Towing Service, which operated, you know, it's truck, basically trucking and towing company.
Did you come here once before?
No, I've never been before.
That's the, that's the Daco.
Oh.
A Daco.
Oh, yeah.
So, I, I guess over the last few years, every year, the township of Parsippany Police Department, uh, you renew your, your, um, I don't know if it's a license or whatever, the rotation for the police towing. And we always did it, always did it, and last year, um, the zoning officer, I don't like the zoning officer, uh,
He is, yes.
And he says, um, you know, uh, your operations have changed here, um, they're not the same. And I'm saying, well, you know, we're basically storing outside, you know, for trench plate. And he says, yeah, but it's different, you know, so, um, we ended up here.
Okay.
And the other I'd like to add to is from, and I'm sure you're all familiar with New, uh, New Road. Um, you cannot see that site from any public access whatsoever. It's shielded by a building in the backside of his building.
And no residential?
No residential anywhere near it.
There was a couple of houses left there.
Excuse me?
There's only a couple of houses left on New Road.
Uh, yeah, I guess on the westbound side of New Road and.
Dennis over there or whatever it is.
Yeah. You can't see, there's a building in front of us, and like I said, you can't see that site.
Do you do any repairs inside?
Uh, no. No, we used to, but no, not right now.
And none of the tenants do either?
Excuse me?
The tenants don't?
No, no.
No tires, any of that?
No, no type of mechanical car vehicle truck repair now.
I do have Mr. Galoppa who can testify to the trench, uh, box operations for the board and the storage of the materials in the yard.
Any other questions of this witness?
Yes, no. Question is, how many trucks are there to transport the steel plates and, uh, trench shield?
So MMP has four trucks, four tractors, and I think four or five trailers that they use. So that's, they're, it has truckers, so that's the most he has. I would technically, as the C and L Towing, have one or two trucks there stationed there, but we, like I said, we never really even use, use for that. We are, you know, it's basically a satellite shop for us.
And are those trucks used exclusively for moving the steel plates and, uh, trench shields, or they do some other outside business too?
Um, I'm, I'm sure they do some other outside work, but like I said, that's their primary customer. I don't want to say, no, they, they've never done any for anyone else, but I'm sure they do.
Okay, all right.
But they're not storing anything else there, as far as you know, the police cars?
No, except for the, the tent spots. I, I'm asking for the police cars now. There's no other outside storage of, of vehicles for those tractor trailers and the steel plates. That would be it.
But do you have to, any, um, impound cars from Parsippany? Do you have to store out there?
Correct, yeah. The ordinance, the township ordinance requires you to stay for.
How many cars do you usually have there, like five?
We have ten. If there's five or six here, it's a lot. We don't, it's like, like I said, it's not, we're rotated, I think we're four or five other guys and, you know, and in the instance, for a long time, we will move toward the yard, because like I said, it's limited, you know. We want to try to keep our existence here very limited for a tenant.
If the board approves the application, can you live with ten as the max?
Yes, yes.
Sure. Any other questions by the board? Any members of, are these people with you?
Yes.
So I will state there were no members of the public here, is that correct?
Correct.
So I will refrain from asking public participation. Next witness?
Let's talk about the, uh, trench boats. Yeah, thank you, Charlie. Greg?
Sir, could you raise your right hand? You swear firm, testimony about to give before the board is the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name?
Sure. First name Greg, G R E G, last name Galoppo, G A L O P P O.
And you're the owner of?
I, I work there.
Okay, uh, for?
Uh, it's, uh, National Trench Safety, or N T S.
Yeah, you're sworn to talking to the microphone?
Okay.
Your, uh, company's operations are being conducted there on site?
That is correct.
You're storing, uh, trench plates and related items in the outside yard?
Yes.
Uh, have you done any modifications, or do you plan to do any modifications to that parking lot?
No.
So can you describe for us how you're storing the materials?
Uh, what we're doing is, um, we're stacking basically steel pieces, whether it be eight foot by twenty foot, eight foot by twelve foot, on top of each other, uh, along the perimeter, on the inside, uh, along the fence. Uh, and also through the middle of the yard with about a twenty-foot passage between the, the gate, uh, the, the, the row on the back against the fence and in the middle, uh, for access for vehicles and forklifts. And a couple of sections near the building that are for damage and to be, uh, brought inside and fixed, like, like steelwork, that sort of thing.
So you're, you are doing, but you're welding on these, uh?
That is correct, yes.
Now, can you just describe for those of us, including myself, who aren't particularly sure what we're talking about? What is a trench box?
What it is, is anytime somebody's doing work, underground work, um, whether it be tanks or sewer lines or what have you, um, if, if, if somebody's working in the hole, um, per OSHA, depending on how deep they are, they need protection or shoring, whether it be a steel box or aluminum box, so that in case the ground gives way, anybody working in the hole is protected. Um, the other thing would be one-inch-thick road plates, which you'll probably drive over, uh, going home tonight. It's just a, you know, eight foot by however long steel plate that covers up the, uh, the hole that's being dug. So when the guys are done at night, they just throw the plate over it, cars can drive over it. So we just basically just, um, have them stacked up in the yard as well for, for example, um, township Parsippany, work, uh, roads department comes in, they have a water main break, we need a box and a road plate, um, for an emergency. They come in, we pick, pick it up, put it on the truck, send them out.
That's all done in your yard?
That is correct.
Now, the, uh, it's, uh, steel plates and frames or rails that go with it, it's assembled on site?
Uh, we, um, can assemble them in our yard or on site. If it's like something aluminum, yes, by, you know, we'll do, we'll put it together for them, because it's real simple. It's just pick up a piece of aluminum, put it together, put it on their truck. If it's steel, we will not.
So to facilitate this loading, you're utilizing the, you've got, uh, generally speaking, two heavy-duty fork trucks on site for moving the equipment?
Correct.
Onto the trucks themselves?
Yes.
Right now, you've actually got three, because you've got, uh, something from another satellite facility that you're, uh, transitioning to.
Transitioning to Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, correct.
So there's some extra material in some of the unused parking spots. It's gonna show up in a photo we're gonna introduce with the next witness. But that material is just there temporarily, and it's getting moved out.
In fact, some, yes, some of it is, uh, leaving tomorrow morning.
Okay. I have no further questions for this witness.
Everything's neat and clean, well-maintained?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
You will see that right now.
How high do you file this?
Anywhere is from three feet to ten feet. Uh, there is, um, what we do is we put it with a four-by-four, we'll stack it with four-by-four or six-by-six timber, uh, per OSHA.
Okay.
Um, you don't want to go too high.
Right.
You just may, you know, it's just not safe. It's, it's our company, safe.
So the amount of coverage you have right now with these pieces, about what you're gonna maintain, or will that increase over time?
The amount we have in our yard?
Yeah.
Uh, it should remain the same, because again, we are, uh, opening up a new location where we're gonna be taking, you know, a substantial portion of our equipment and moving it there to, um, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. We also just have a new place in Boston and down in Maryland, so moving equipment back and forth is something easily done.
Any other questions? Next witness, Alex?
Thank you.
Sir, if you could raise your right hand, you swear firm, testimony about to give before the board is the truth, so help you God? And for the record, state and spell your name?
Alexander Dougy, last name is D O U G H E R T Y.
And you're?
Professional planner on behalf of McGonan Associates.
And all your licenses are in full force and effect?
Yes, they are.
Are qualified either before this board or other boards in the state from Jersey?
Before this board, yes, and about fifty this year.
Great. Um, Mr. Chairman, the, uh, witness has been sworn and qualified as a, uh, planner.
Thanks.
Is this gonna be the twenty-five cent, uh?
This is the twenty-five cent version. We're gonna show us some pictures, show the board how well-maintained this site is.
Uh, A one?
Yes, please. You have those?
All right, thirty-seven cents. Let's go. All right, fifty.
Give it to Nora over there.
I'm fascinated by this. I used to work for a company.
I'm fascinated by this. I used to work for a company, a freight company, yeah.
So Mr. Dougy, preliminary questions, you are fully familiar with the application here before the board this evening?
Yes, I am.
You've had an opportunity to examine local ordinances and management plans. I wonder if you could compare this application to those documents and give us your findings? And also your findings regarding visual impact and the effect on the surrounding. So starting with A-one, let's get right to it. Got some preliminary photos, this was prepared by McDonough and Associates, isn't that true?
Yes, it is.
You were involved in the preparation of this document?
Yes, I was.
First page is the zone tax map?
Correct.
Then an aerial map on page two, I'm rushing to through it a little bit. Page three, the land use map showing what's going on in the neighborhood, all industrial. Page four confirming that, and getting right to where I want to go. Page five, this is a grown shot from yesterday, isn't that true?
Correct.
This is showing existing conditions on the site. I wonder if you could go ahead and describe for us what we're looking at? Starting with the fact that all those trucks parked on the grass at the bottom of the page are on a neighboring property?
Correct.
Not this property.
Correct. So if we jump to page five, as indicated, what you're looking at here is essentially flag lot. I think it's well-represented with the drive aisle, and as previously discussed, the building located in the front. This site is not visible from the public realm. The use in the back is what we're here for. As indicated, the trucks on the lawn at the bottom of the image are on a neighboring site, not belong to us. And what you're looking at is the outside storage of the reference steel plates, the parking. What you see is relatively available, as we heard from the operators of this site. The towing is essentially a satellite facility with, as we discussed, ten stalls for, and then two tow trucks. The trench plates and the trucking, it's kind of a symbiotic relationship here. One is very much dependent on the other and vice versa. What makes this, you know, site interesting here, when we look at it for site suitability, is it is a flag lot, so it's not really seen. The uses are very much similar in nature here, with the storage of vehicles outside and/or trench plates outside. I am very familiar with both businesses. The trench plates make money when they're off-site, so the goal is to keep as much off-site as possible. So as far as what we're seeing and discussed before, it's very practical that there would be less storage here than what is being shown in the image.
In fact, the image on page six is a nice clear shot from directly overhead, showing how all the aisles are clear. We've got an action shot there of a fork truck, the yellow truck, in operation going through the yard to give the board some perspective as to how much room is between these spaces. As was testified, it's twenty feet between the twenty-foot aisleways for operations.
Correct. What's important to note too is, this is a safety industry, it is regulated by OSHA, so there are certain standards and qualifications. So I think, as we just heard before, safety is involved, whether it's for the guy in the hole or at the yard itself. And I don't, I don't think accidents at the yard will look too favorably for contracts going forward and the likes of that. So keeping the site organized, neatly stacked, and being able to operate efficiently in case of emergency is the intent here with the trench box.
Now, the board is very familiar with the Dichi and the concept of how experiences are granted. Why don't we just cut right to it? Do you see any negatives involved with this application?
I do, I do not. When we look at the negatives, I believe we can be granted without the schedule of that's written to the public or the zone intent. We are in the LIW-two, which is a limited industrial warehouse district. I think when we look at this, this kind of fits that narrative here to a degree. As we heard, operational testimony, site will work and function safely and efficiently. Visually, this is an optimal location, as discussed, it is a flag lot, it's not visible from the public, and the building in front of it kind of shields that, as well as this particular building shields that outside storage. The degree of the parsha from the zone scheme is not substantial. Again, this is an industrial zone. And when we look at the project, we believe it's consistent with the 2020 master plan goal for stable rateable base, land uses in appropriate locations. And when we look at that, you know, from a, from the perspective from the zone intent under section forty-three, zero dash sixteen, two F, when we look at auto services, they can be in use with conjunction with new and used auto lots. So we do have that towing facility, but again, as we heard, we are not operating any mechanical auto services or repairs on the site, whether it's for the tow yard or the trucks themselves, so.
I'm just going to jump ahead on you again, Alex. The uses here, each one of these individual uses is something that's contemplated by the zone, isn't that true?
Yeah.
Except with the notable exception of outdoor storage, which is not permitted.
Right, it's not permitted expressly in this, this nature, but we do allow for new and use of auto services, which again, those vehicles are stored outside.
So three together is creating a variance itself also, isn't that true?
Correct.
But they're very symbiotic in their nature.
Hundred percent, yes.
There's a lot of buffering, no impact from the outdoor storage here, plenty of room?
Yes, so the site is about two-point-four acres, the flag lot. Behind us is undeveloped land, open space, and behind that is the dump to Sharky's Waste Facility. So I think when we look at site suitability, this would be a prime location given, you know, what's surrounding us. Again, with the access point to the highway for emergency towing and/or services, this is an optimal location.
So you think these variances can be granted?
Absolutely.
I have no further questions from this witness.
So wetlands right behind?
I believe there's a retention pond in the rear, and then the dump is behind that?
There are no constraints from any of the wetlands in the area?
There's no flooding on site, it's not in the flood zone. That is, that is area that's subject to flooding in other locations, but this location does not flow.
So if you had one company doing three, these three similar uses, we wouldn't be here, is that correct?
Well, the outdoor storage is something-
Oh, the outdoor storage. Okay. In an area where nobody's ever going to see it?
Nobody's going to see it.
Except the raccoons coming out of the Sharky's dump, that's about the only ones they're going to see.
Do we get an indication the outdoor storage would not be more than ten feet high?
I believe we can make that representation, yes.
Isn't that an OSHA requirement anyway?
I think it is.
No, there's no-
But you can live with it, you can live with that.
You can live with ten feet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions?
The next thing is, it's only steel and aluminum, you're not going to have planks or lumber or that kind of thing? You use lumber to separate the steel sheets from the plates, but that's it.
Steel, primarily steel and aluminum?
What I'm thinking is, there's been an evolution of different uses here, and to make sure we don't keep seeing this every time they change, or also they use plastic or fiberglass.
Which probably could very well happen. You know, somebody develops a super-strong box, it's not metal.
Well, you use the bulkheads, they're all fiberglass now.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Just real quick, Chaz, you had a lot of items here, are you satisfied?
I'm satisfied, yes.
You'll comply with the engineer's letter?
Well, we've asked for a site plan waiver, so-
Other than that?
Other than that.
It wasn't the grace of sketches, but I think everything came across.
You're okay, Chaz, right?
Yes.
No. It would look a lot worse.
Somebody's twelve-year-old grandson do that.
I was wondering, my daughter was working on the last couple weeks.
No more witnesses?
That's it.
You don't even want to sum, do you?
I'm going to rely on the application, in fact, towards time.
And I don't, don't believe we need to go at the conference?
No.
It's, it's de minimis request.
State power.
It's not going to affect anybody's well-being in the town, correct?
Correct.
No one's going to see it, it doesn't add any pollution, and I-
It's been ongoing, you know, problems come on.
Yeah, you're not, you're not dumping anything into the retention pond like Visel Hex or something like that. Okay, so let's, someone give me a resolution real quick, so we can go home and watch TV.
Application, application number twenty-one, colon seventy-four, two-seventy-three New Road LLC, two-seventy-three New Road, block number seven-seven-zero, lot number nine, zone LIW-two, to issue or grant devariance in those. Three principal uses in one tenant space and outdoor storage.
Second, Josh, go. It'll be subject to, subject to no repairs of trucks or cars, subject to ten cars with regard to the police towing to be stored on the property at any one time. Piles of steel plates will be no more than ten feet. Only steel and aluminum will be stored outside of the building.
Well, that's what I say, I think you just do the height. They, they could be in some kind of a-
Pipe of glass?
Material or something else.
I would rather leave that last condition, I don't, fine seems comfortable with it.
I just think the height is what we need for.
And then the last would be comply with the board engineer's letter, with the exception of the site plan?
Yes. Second, Josh, go.
Thank you. Any discussion, Maru, Colu, Roll?
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Joskowitz?
Yep.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Mazzarella?
Yes.
Greig?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Willans?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, have a great evening.
Motion to adjourn?
One other thing, and Mr. King mentioned to me while we were sitting here earlier. It doesn't hurt to go visit a site, okay? If you've got a couple of minutes and you're in the neighborhood, go visit the site. I visited the two-family house over on Georgine Court, and I think you'll get a much better understanding of what you have there by seeing it and walking up to it. So I try whenever, I mean, it's simple, somebody wants to put a deck in, I don't, you know, unless there's some controversy about it. But I think in something like this, where we need to make a decision, I think it's important. So if you have a chance, you know, if you're out driving, it's right off of two-eighty-seven, right at the end of the road exit, so.
Mr. King, to your point, you might want to drive by Zoom Auto Group.
How many you got? You weren't here! Let's, let's, what's adjourned? Motion to adjourn? There's a second? All in favor?
Stand and go.
Anyone?